I don't even know what that is yet, so tell me.
Good evening, welcome to the March 3rd, 2023 Planning Board Meeting, Work Session. Could we first please stand for the pledge on May 3rd, March?
Why do we do this? This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, Tom has asked me if anybody does speak to please speak into the microphone so everybody could hear. Uh, today, the only, or tonight, the only item on the agenda is the Soundview project. I think it's probably a good idea we go around the room and introduce ourselves, just so everybody knows who everybody else is. Rich Fawn, put the planning board.
Our buck, planning board.
John Tegger, Director of Planning.
Jim Gladhor, Planning Board Attorney.
Robin Steinberg, Town Planner.
Nancy Colley, Planning Department.
Sergio Esposito, Councilman, Planning Board Liaison.
Johanna Duffy, Barton Lee Judas, Town Wetland Consultant.
Peter Alguino, Conservation Board.
Diane Dryer, Conservation Board.
Phyllis Bach, Conservation Board.
Gerardo Carpano, Conservation Board.
Uh, Mark Blanchard, Project Attorney.
Paul Galaro, Underhill Soundview.
Mike Galaro, Underhill Soundview.
Terrence Murphy, Underhill Soundview.
Steve Moreno, Tim Miller Associates.
Joe Reno, Site Design Consultants.
Bob Waterhouse, Planning Board.
Bob Phalen, Planning Board.
Rob Garrigan, Planning Board.
Wee Muscala, Planning Board.
Okay, the floor is yours.
We're gonna start off with Conservation tonight, okay? Environmental.
Good evening, everyone, Steve Moreno, Tim Miller Associates. Uh, we're here to talk about the wetlands and water resources on the site this evening. So first, I'll just give an overview of where we are, how we got to this point. Um, as part of the initial site analysis and review, we delineated the wetlands on site in November of 2020. In February of 2023, Johanna Duffy and I walked the site to confirm that wetland line. At that time, a couple of small areas were added to the delineation. And the map you see up there now on, on the screen is the, uh, actually, that's the impact one, just back up, yep. Is it there? Nope. Let me go back to, where's the directory, Joe?
Just get Miller, that's your presentation.
All right, this'll, this'll do it, yeah. Okay, well, anyway. Wetland delineation as shown on the current site plan is, uh, is accurate per that, per that final site visit. Uh, but I'll just give an overview of how we got to where we are tonight. What do I need?
Click on this, make sure I have all your files open. So those are all your files.
Nope, that's it, okay, we're good.
All right, so just minimize that. And all your files are across the top.
Right, so when we started the delineation process, typically, we go back to available resources to determine what, if any, regulated wetlands that are already mapped are shown on the, for the site. This is the New York State DEC wetlands mapping. Uh, there are no DEC wetlands on the property. We then look at the NWI, which is the National Wetlands Inventory, as put together by the federal government, by Fish and Wildlife Service. Again, other than the pond on the property, uh, no wetlands were, um, are, are mapped on the NWI maps. Then the next thing we look at is generally is soils mapping. Um, this is from the NRCS soils mapping website. Um, the soils that are shown on the site are Paxton soils, which are an upland soil. Um, along the western edge of the property, it's a Paxton on a steep slope along through the center and most of the property, it's Paxton on a gradually sloped part of the property. Uh, and they do show water, open water as being the, uh, for the pond, on the existing pond. No, no, uh, mapping of wetland soils on the property per the federal wetlands mapping. Uh, we did site visits then at that point. Uh, this is the existing pond. You can see that the pond is maintained as managed landscape, uh, in the areas around the pond. Is that looking, this is the outlet structure that drains from the property to the, then to the north through Beaver Ridge. And then we came to the part of the property where there were wetlands, um, where there were saturated areas, and those are the areas we'll be talking about tonight. This is what we call Wetland A. Wetland A starts as runoff and a discharge from a culvert on Glen Rock Street, flows down through a, an eroded channel, down through some areas where there was a clogged culvert. I know we've had this discussion before, but we'll, I'm just gonna kind of cover some of the background. Um, through a, what was a clogged culvert, that area frag, the area you see right here is Fragmites, it's a non-native invasive grass species growing in that part of the area, just upstream of the, of the blocked culvert. Below that, you see the beginning of the channel right through here, that's the channel that then flows down to the pond. This is, um, a view looking from north to south of the existing access, what was, what was, what was at one time an access road, an emergency access through to Beaver Ridge, uh, from there to Underhill Avenue. Um, that was built in the late seventies, early eighties. Um, at that time, um, some water was then blocked from draining through the site, and that's what, again, that's what we'll be talking about tonight. This is what we call Wetland C. Um, it's a small pocket of wetland, a little over 5,000 square feet in area. Um, the access road is right here, just to the right. As you can see, it's ponded water, um, but we found very little evidence of wetland vegetation or wetland soils in that area, but the hydrology is certainly there. This, again, this is Wetland B, which is a little further to the north of Wetland C. It's an excavated area that has, that's, that has since filled with water and is now, um, a small ponded, open water area. From that point, we tried to look at the, because these two areas especially were very small, we wanted to look at the history of the site and try to get a feeling for how they formed on the property, what kind of hydrologies available, what, um, what would have driven, um, the site to have these two little wetlands develop. So what we did is we go back through our historical aerial photos. Now, this is a, a recent find, um, a 1926 aerial photo of the site. Um, the wetlands in question are currently in this area right here, if you see, if you can see my cursor moving around there. So as, in, in 1926, clearly, this is all agricultural land, not only the, uh, Underhill property, but all the surrounding areas were tilled and agriculture. Without any access, without any blockage of water coming down the hill, there is no, no evidence of ponded areas on, on the property at that time. We move forward to 1947, same story, still in some kind of tillage, um, no areas of wetland, no areas of water accumulating there. 1960, same story. Again, now Glen Rock now exists in 1960. Water runoff from, directly from Glen Rock does flow down that hill, but without any means of blocking that water from draining through the site, uh, there's no evidence of, of wetlands at that time. 1907, 1990, between 1976 and 1990 is when site, things on the site started to change. With the construction of Beaver Ridge, there was an approved access, emergency access to Underhill Avenue, and you can see that access right through here. And, and yes, and that, and that part of the site, which was formerly farmland, is now, has now been excavated and, and used as, um, basically a borrow pit for soil material. And with the construction of that access road, the, the evidence on the site shows that there's still remaining fill piles on the downstream side of the hill, and water that was, that previously flowed from Beaver, from Glen Rock down, over the slope down towards the, uh, developed part of the site, was blocked at that point and created a damming effect, which started to hold water back. So on this, on this photo here, you can see this would be Wetland B, a small ponded area, and this area right here is the beginnings of Wetland C, and as you can see, it's right adjacent to what, what was at that time, the, uh, emergency access road. Since that time, the emergency access road has become saturated, it's barely passable in my Jeep, I doubt if any, uh, other vehicles are gonna get through there. But that's Wetland C right there, here's Wetland B. 1990, well, and just to go back again, in 1960, the area was still wide open, so no trees on that whole western edge of the property. Uh, by 1990, some trees along the fringes of the property had started to grow, all the trees along Glen Rock have grown in, um, but most of the site, like I say, has been used, is being used for excavation, for, uh, for, uh, use of fill for the development, and, uh, has been, um, excavated and disturbed. By 2000, there are still some open areas on the site, as you can see there to the west of the, um, Beaver Ridge buildings, but small trees, predominantly, um, cottonwoods, aspens, and black locusts have grown in on that western edge of the site. Those are very fast-growing and opportunistic trees that'll grow quickly in an area when, when farming, when agriculture ceases, it's a successional forest. Uh, eventually, that would be, that would then move on to being a, probably an old hickory forest, or possibly a sugar maple forest. But in the, uh, in the 2000 aerial, you can see a small area here, that's Wetland B, and you can't really see Wetland C, it's, it's here under, under the vegetation that's now grown in since that time. And here's the 2021 aerial, the, uh, the current, the most recent aerial of the site. Trees have grown in on that western edge, um, and the, uh, the two pockets of wetland we're talking about now are no longer evident on, on the site, at least covered with vegetation generally now over from, from the canopy. Regarding Wetland A, um, Wetland A includes the pond on the site. This is the 1960 aerial again, there's, it, it, it's not real clear at that time how the water is getting from Glen Rock. Uh, the majority of water that gets to the pond currently comes from the, is coming from the intersection of Glen Rock and Underhill, as well as runoff coming down from the hill to the, from the hill to the west of Glen Rock Street. As you know, the Glen Rock Street is not a curbed road, there are, uh, there are catch basins on the western side, which flow through culverts underneath the road and then onto the property, but that's not, it's not curbed, so any runoff coming down that hill flows directly over the road, if it overflows to cul, those, uh, catch basins and down the slope towards where, towards where the wetlands are. Uh, Wetland A gets its hydrology again from that hillside, as well as some, picking up some road runoff, uh, at the corner of Underhill and Glen Rock, which is diverted to a culvert, which enters the site, and which we show as the water course that, that feeds Wetland A and into the pond. So this is the, uh, current delineation of the site. When Johanna and I walked out on the property, we did expand Wetland C with this area here, it was clearly saturated and underwater the day we went out there. That wetland is a little, like I say, a little over 5,000 square feet. Wetland B is 2,000 square feet, and Wetland A, with this, we added this additional piece, there's a swell out on the site, again, that catches runoff as it comes down from Glen Rock. Uh, there's a, a little channel, depressional area there that picks up the runoff, runs it to the existing water course, and then down to the pond. So that's the final delineation of the site. So from that point then, what, what the board has asked us to do is really try to evaluate what the functions and importance of those wetlands on the site are, and how they affect the development. So what we did is, uh, we, we used a model that's a relatively common model for wetland assessment, called the McGee-Hollins Rapid Procedure for Assessing Wetland Functional Capacity. Uh, it's a quant, it's a, it's a quantitative analysis generally used for individual wetlands. Smaller wetlands are typically not, um, as well coordinated with this, with this model, because the smaller the wetland, the, the less likely it has of, uh, the higher functions of some, some wetland systems. But we did go through function by function, um, typical wetland functions. You can see there, there's a list of eight functions, let me just blow that up a little bit. There are eight functions we look at in terms of determining what a wetland is doing and, and the important, and how it's, what, what benefits it's providing in terms of those, uh, those functions. And it's modification of groundwater discharge, modification of groundwater recharge. So if the recharge area generally over sandy soil, water's getting into the groundwater, a wetland in a stream corridor particularly, um, might have a sand and gravel aquifer, water from that wetland is getting down into the aquifer and charging, recharging the aquifer. Groundwater discharge is generally on a sloped wetland, where you have groundwater that pops out of, of the ground at certain points, um, for reasons only the soil knows, um, causing a discharge of water to, to surface waters and flowing downhill. Uh, storm and floodwater storage, very important function of wetlands, as we all know, capturing water runoff, um, both from developed and undeveloped areas, and storing that water, slowing water down as it moves down the watershed, uh, before it gets to the receiving waters. Modification of stream flow is if it's providing any base flow, um, water other than just water that comes in after a storm event. Wetlands tend to store water during storm and let it out slowly to the, uh, receiving streams, so rather than have, you know, flood, drought, flood, drought, wetlands will saturate and hold water for a longer period of time, and then discharge that water to the, um, streams, uh, more slowly. So in the drier times of the year, perennial streams will still be flowing, because they're still receiving base flow from the, uh, from the watershed and from the wetlands in that watershed. Modification of water quality is the ability of a wetland to capture and treat nutrients. Um, that's, that's really a function of the vegetation in the wetland, as well as the soils in the wetland. So again, water quality, how long the wetland holds water before it, um, it runs off into the, the next receiving water. Export of detritus is a function of, of organic availability in the, in the ecosystem. Um, wetlands tend to accumulate vegetation, um, biomass, both from the vegetation growing in the wetland, as well as from trees and, and other plants in the watershed, as that works its way down, um, wetlands capture and hold that nutrient, those nutrients for a while, and then as they break down, that gets, uh, discharged to the, uh, again, to the receiving waters and to downstream waters, um, feeding the ecosystems in those wetlands further downstream. If you didn't have that, you'd have basically deserts, uh, in the water, in the waters, downstream, um, and, and that, that function particularly then feeds organic matter into the, into the system, so that the system functions. Contribution to abundance and diversity of wetland vegetation, wetlands are often very diverse and, uh, dynamic systems. Uh, we know of wetlands being swamps, where a swamp has a, a, a ground cover layer, it'll have a small shrub layer, a little high shrub layer, small trees, a canopy above that. Generally, you know, you can have 10, or 12, or 15, or 20 species in a well-developed wetland system. In less developed wetland systems, you won't have that, so basically, the ranking is based on what kind of diversity you're seeing, what kind of, uh, layering of, of, of the strata of vegetation in a system, as well as, um, native versus non-native and, and that kind of thing. And abundance, contribution to abundance and diversity of wetland fauna. Again, wetlands are areas that species, there are certain species that specifically like to live in wetlands, whether we're talking about amphibians and turtles, uh, certain, certain snake species, it also is the contribution of a wetland to resident mammals, um, both in the water and outside of the water. Certain species, as we know, bog turtles and other, uh, threatened or endangered species live specifically in certain types of wetlands, so a, a wetland contributes a habitat type that other kinds of, uh, ecosystems can't, can't provide for, for a certain species. So we went through, having said all that, we looked at the three wetlands we have on site, um, from those standpoints to see how they, how they function. And we did the evaluation for each of the wetlands, so for Wetland A, modification of groundwater discharge, as water comes down that hill from Glen Rock, um, there are several points in that system as it goes down the hill where groundwater discharges, comes to the surface, um, then flows into that, into that channel, that narrow channel that we have, and eventually flows downhill to the, to the pond. So rather than, we call that a moderate, um, groundwater discharge, it's not a wooded swa, a slope-based wooded swamp kind of situation, where we have sites, there are other sites in Yorktown I've been to certainly, where groundwater is literally pouring out of the side of the hill, and a swamp will develop in that, in that kind of a hydro, hydrologic situation. Uh, you get a well-developed, um, wetland growing on a slope. In this situation, we have some pockets of groundwater discharge, some moist areas, some damp discharge areas that stay wet part of the year and flow to that, then drain to that water course as it moves down the hill. Stormwater and floods, storm and floodwater storage for the water course portion of the, uh, of the wetland is low, there is very, there's topographic relief, it, it, you know, it's, it flows rather swiftly down slope towards the pond, um, it's a narrow channel and eroded channel, it's not holding water, it's not doing anything to prevent stormwater, flood, flooding, floodwaters from, um, getting down to the receiving waters downstream. Modus, modification of stream flow, we know that this is generally runs, this, this, uh, water course flows most of the year, we know that the pond is full all year, so there is a contribution to modification of stream flow to downstream areas, as well as to the larger pond itself. There, uh, even in the summertime, there is some flow coming through that wetland, even when it's not, when we haven't had a storm in a few wa, in a little while, um, water, water flow is still coming out of that system, so we call that a moderate. Uh, modification of water quality, again, because there's not any detention, retention, vegetation absorption of nutrients, um, the system as it currently exists does not, um, modify water quality in a positive way. In fact, it, what, what it's really going on out there is that we have an eroded channel, which is contributing more sediment and, and eroded materials to the downstream waters. Uh, exported detritus, it is densely vegetated in that area, they're not all native species, but they are species, and they are, um, contributing to detritus in, in the, in the autumn, when leaves start to fall, when plants start to break down for the winter. So that is, that the stream channel is picking up some of that material and bringing it downstream, so, um, we have that as a moderate func, moderate level of function for that. What happens though on our site, and generally with the runoff that it's picking up off of Glen Rock Street, it's bringing that nutrient-rich water down to the pond and contributing to eutrophication of the pond. In fact, part of our proposal is ultimately, ultimately to dredge the pond to get some of that organic material out, because it's at the point now where it's, it's accumulating in the pond, as that breaks down, it provides nutrients to algae, creates a eutrophic situation, and the pond becomes less, less desirable from both a wildlife standpoint and from an aesthetic standpoint. Wetland vegetation and wetland fauna, there's been no ev, we've seen nothing out there that indicates that this wetland is providing any, um, habitat for wetland-dependent species other than the pond itself, where we have herons and, uh, some wading birds there. Uh, more than, more than likely, there are, um, painted turtles in the pond, although we haven't seen them, it would not be surprising if, if there are painted turtles in the pond. But that's in the pond itself, where there is, uh, water being stored, where there is some depth of water, some habitat available for those types of species. But the wetland itself, again, being a narrow water course coming down from, from Glen Rock, is, is not providing, um, any contribution to fauna, faunal species particularly that are wetland-dependent. Wetland B and Wetland C, we can kind of take together, because they function primarily for storage of gra, for storage of, of runoff. We know that water comes down from Glen Rock, we know that water comes down that slope leading down to where these wetlands are, are, exist, and because of the, the topography that was created with the, um, construction of the access road, water gets trapped behind those, um, behind that berm such, such as it is, and, and stays there and is, you know, stored in that, in that, in those two little wetlands. So they do provide some bun, some function in terms of storm and floodwater storage. Uh, they don't outlet to anywhere else on the site, so they are kind of self-contained. Um, I would guess that probably last weekend, when we had all that rain, they filled up and probably overflowed that emergency access road, and down through the, then, then down through the lawn areas, uh, on the remainder of the property. But in general, uh, they store water, um, but hold on to it, it's not, um, discharged, it doesn't go into the ground, so it's not contributing to, to recharge in the ground. Um, the soils in that wetland, what's left of the soils after they were stripped many years ago, is just a dense, compacted subsoil, um, so that, you know, it's not getting into the ground, there's not a lot of infiltration or recharge going on as a result of that. Other than that, it primarily because of the small size of the wetlands, um, the function, it's, they're functioning at a, at a, at a low level. The one thing we wanted to look at, the one caveat, is that oftentimes, when you have a wetland of this type, they will be seasonally wet, and in the fall, uh, in, in the summer with, when, in the late spring, as the leaves pop out, and through the summer, when it's warmer and less rain, um, there is an opportunity for vernal pool hydrology, vernal pool habitats on the site. So we do, when we, even with smaller wetlands, we do want to take a look at that as part of what might be going on out there. But I was there through the end of March and early April, which is the typical time when you would see vernal pool breeding, um, amphibians primarily, uh, in, in, in vernal pool wetlands, and there was no evidence of any, uh, vernal pool wetlands, there were no spring peepers out there, no, no wood frogs or, or salamanders breeding out there. It's, uh, I think it's not a well enough developed system, a lot of times, these vernal pool systems will be in red maple swamps, it'll be a depressional area in a red maple swamp, where you have some, uh, vegetative diversity, you have roots, you have, uh, tree limbs, et cetera, that fall in the water, that act as habitat for these species that, that they kind of work with, um, and these two wetlands don't have any of that, so. So based on that, that's how we came to the conclusion, I, I know we've mentioned it before, that how we came to the conclusion that these, uh, particular wetlands are, are relatively low-function in terms of, of how wetlands function, how wetlands are graded. It's, it, it, it's, you know, important that, that most, um, town ordinances, state codes, et cetera, recognize that while all wetlands are important, not all wetlands are created equal. And in this situation, we have a couple of, of wetlands that were, in my opinion, that were, were formed by accident as a result of, uh, construction activities that happened on the site, and up to this point, haven't developed to a point where they have any actual wetland function other than being wetlands, defi, as defined by the towns code. They wouldn't be regulated either by the state or by the Army Corps of Engineers, because the other features you generally see with wetland systems aren't there. So, um, so regarding that then, when we start talking about impacts to these wetlands and what happens after construction, um, I, I know that it's a significant part of the proposal to install drainage improvements and curbing on, on Glen Rock Street. As part of that work then, actually, let me go back to those, go back to the more recent aerial photo. Zoom out a little bit. So here's Glen Rock along the western edge of our property, and right now, the runoff from Glen Rock flows through our site unimpeded. There are a couple of, like I say, there are a couple of catch basins along the western side that catch some of the water, but anything that falls from the crown of the road back, and anything I would see that falls on that hillside, um, gets down through the site, some of it ends up in those wet, in that Wetland B and C. With the curbing and, and, uh, road improvements on, on Glen Rock, that water will now be diverted around those wetlands. So even if a plan was to come up where there was some lack, some lessening of disturbance in that area, and those wetlands still were there in structure, um, the hydrology would no longer exist to support those wetlands. So that's an impact, that it's also a, a road improvement, uh, that's something that, that will be weighed by the planning board as you guys move forward. But from a hydrologic standpoint, those wetlands are now going to be cut off. Regardless, any development along Glen Rock Street as well is going to be diverting water, um, from those areas, uh, to stormwater control and, and other, um, improvements that are being made along Glen Rock and on the western part of, of this site. So, once we got, once we've gotten to the place where we've assessed the, the function of the wetlands and, um, future considerations of the wetlands, I, I do want to point out that, that the wet, that the runoff from the southwestern part of Glen Rock will continue to flow to the south, um, and then will be picked up in that, in the new storm system, and will be discharged to the same water course where we currently get our water for the, for the wetland coming down the hill and the pond. And we've, uh, just recently had discussions, and we'll be installing a hydrodynamic separator. You know, all that runoff coming off Glen Rock is currently untreated, so it gets onto the site untreated. You'll notice that as you go up Glen Rock on the right-hand side of the street, you'll, you, you know where the water is coming through, because you see the sediment that's accumulated in those areas. There are several spots where sediment is accumulated right next to the road, you have some Fragmites growing in there, in those areas, because Fragmites like disturbed, low-nutrient soils, or at least like it more than other, other species do, and you'll, so you'll see that growing in those areas. The, the, so the runoff from Glen Rock will still come through our site, but we are proposing a hydrodynamic separator to capture that water and spin some of that, um, sediment and, and, uh, accumulated, you know, sediments and, and gravel and such that go, get on that road, and separating that out before it gets into our water course, thereby increase, uh, improving the quality of the water that gets through the site from Glen Rock as it, as it enters the pond. So that's one of the improvements we're proposing then as part of the mitigation plan. So having come to the conclusion that these wetlands are low-functioning and will likely be impacted by any development on the site, we've then come up with a mitigation plan to try to offset the, um, the disturbance to those wetland areas regardless of function or, or, or value. We have about, at this point, we have about 9,000 square feet. Where's that? Let me just go back. I have to remember that just to be sure. Seven, about 8,000, a little over 8,000 square feet, we've, of, of wetland impact, direct wetland impact, including 7,700 square feet of wetland, of that, of those two wetlands that we've been talking about, wetlands B and C. Wetland A, here in the southwest corner, based on our recent discussions and as the site plan now shows, and this is part of a discussion I had with Johanna the other day. Her question was, these two units here, is there anything that can be done to pull them back from the wetland in order to reduce, minimize the wetland impacts to those areas? So we had the discussion with Mr. Galaro, and we have moved this two-unit building 25 feet back towards Underhill Avenue, which now clears that corridor. We had, we previously had wetland impact for about 1,200 square feet in this area, which is the area where, that currently floods over the road, where that culvert is that was blocked and, and created that saturated area. We've moved the building back from that area, so now, and there's a retaining wall here, so that that's now a clear, that's now a clear flow through there. And we, this building, the four, four-unit building was also moved back 25 feet. There's really not much, it, it, what it does is it clears this corridor here for the upper part of the stream as it comes down, discharge from that culvert as it comes down the hill. But that swell, that runoff swell that, that we identified in the more recent site walks, will still be impacted by this. But again, it's, it, it's a similar situation. By correcting drainage on Glen Rock Street, we would be diverting the water that otherwise got into that, that historically got into that swell. So that swell would essentially dry out anyway, if, if the improvements on Glen Rock Street are made. So I could say, we're about, we're at about 7,800 square feet of, of impact now. We were at a little over 9,000 before, but we've reduced that. And what we've come up with then, as a mitigation plan, is at about 14,000 square feet of wetland creation and expansion of the existing wetland A. What we have in wetland A is we have that corridor as it comes down. The car, the culvert that's currently in place will essentially be moved a little bit further downstream for the road crossing, for the road coming in from Underhill. And that will be culverted, but below that, with Joe moving these, these buildings and regrading that area, we'll have a clear run from, from where the culvert discharges down to the pond. And as part of that, we are proposing some grading on both sides of the stream channel in a way that will, let me just blow that up. In a way that will intercept some of that groundwater discharge I was talking about before, as well as create some pockets of shallow depressional areas where some of that water can slow, can reside for a time before it then works its way down the hill. What we're doing there is catching, like I say, intercepting lateral groundwater flow as well as runoff, capturing, capturing, capturing it in these smaller depressional areas as well as using that groundwater discharge to saturate these other areas on either side of the stream. Water will still flow to the stream, but it'll just flow a little bit more slowly. With our grading plan, it will kind of capture some of that water as it moves down the hill. We have also, following discussions both in-house and with the town staff, we had, previously we had the walking path coming up and around our mitigation area. We have now, and far away from the pond and closer to where the actual residential units will be. We've moved that down now closer to the pond. So actually, anyone walking across the footbridge and walking along the path will have the pond on the left and our created wetland on the right. One of the benefits of our created wetland as we've designed it is a significant increase in biological and vegetative diversity on the site. Like I say, the, the wetlands that we have aren't real, aren't, aren't diverse in the vegetative way. There are very little in terms of wetland buff, wetland vegetation in the wetlands. It's a, a stream corridor with some phragmities and some other very common species growing there. By doing this plan, capturing some of that water as it comes down the hill, intercepting some of the shallow groundwater, not a lot of grading, we're talking about one or two-foot cuts in some of these areas, but it's enough to intercept that groundwater as it comes down the hill and create enough saturated conditions that we think, that we believe, based on our experience, that wetland vegetation will, will grow and thrive in this area. So we, we've now, we're now using, and here's our planting plan, we're using eight different, seven different tree and, and shrub species on the site, five different herbaceous species on the site as underplantings to that, as well as seeding it with a seed, with a wetland seed mix that has 20 or 25 different wetland species in it. Generally, we like to throw seed mix on at the end, throw 25 different species of seeds out there. 10 or 12 will, will like the area, you know, as it develops, some plants will like it better than others. But if you throw enough variety out there, you'll get 10 or 12 species that will grow, and actually, will, again, will create a more diverse habitat than what we have out on the site right now. Yeah, so it'll be a one-to-one improve, one-to-one, over a one-to-one mitigation in terms of square footage, but in my opinion, a significant improvement, just from a vegetative standpoint and a wetlands, functional habitat standpoint as well. By mixing in, many of the, the species we're using have berries and, and fruits that, that birds will, will be attracted to. So it will create, in my opinion, it will create a more diverse habitat for, for area wetland species. Regarding the discussion of, there was, we had some discussions regarding buffers and what's going on on the site now as opposed to what, what we're proposing. Let's see, do I have, it's just the landscape plan. That's not it. That's yours, right? Oh, here we go. Mr. Bach had correctly pointed out that we have this stream coming down between those buildings, and what can we do to at least enhance some buffer on those, in that, in that stream corridor? This plan doesn't show it yet, because we're still a little bit behind in getting everybody's plans coordinated with the new, with the new site plan. This two-unit building here, like I said, has been moved 25 feet further to the south, out of the wetland entirely. And, but that creates now a wider pocket here, less grading, a wider pocket for enhancement of the stream corridor as it moves down the hill. And it's all, also going to be available on the, on the west side of, of the, the new road going in there. There's an opportunity for planting on both sides of the, of the, of the stream corridor now that, that wasn't there before, and that will be an improvement again, in my opinion, because most of what's out there now is, is non-native and, and viney vegetation, just growing through that corridor. So here's an opportunity to improve that stream as it comes down. And then around the pond, as you, as you know, most of the buffer area around the pond is currently mowed, is maintained as lawn. There are some trees, there are trees along the edge of the pond. We've moved, we've done some moving of, of stormwater structures and other things in order to preserve more of the trees that are currently existing around the pond. And then with the stormwater management plan, which is designed to take care of, of the townhomes and, and pick up that runoff from the new impervious surfaces, we're also creating a pocket wetland down here on the south end of the property, adjacent to the pond. So right now, in this area, we have lawn area with two trees growing. In the future, it'll be a, a pocket wetland for stormwater purposes. We're not taking credit for that as mitigation, but as a buffer, it, it's a valuable buffer area to the pond. And then you can see that the landscape architect has provided a, a number of different tree and shrub species and plant species of different sizes along that area to enhance that, that portion of the buffer. Again, we've changed the plan slightly in order to preserve more of the trees along the northern edge. With the new site plan, we, there was a two-bedroom, a two-unit building right in this location, just on the south side of the, the road up the hill. That has been relocated to the new cul-de-sac, newly redesigned cul-de-sac at the end of the townhouse road. So now, that area now becomes open and available for, for, for new plantings and vegetation rather than, than another building there. So that has opened up additional buffer in that area. And, oh yeah, and the, these two buildings, which are closest to the pond, they're a little more than 100 feet away, but they're closest to the pond. There will be landscaping, as you can see, there's the beginning of landscaping behind those buildings. Again, setting up a buffer between those buildings and the wetland, the new wetland, as well as the pond down below it. I just don't want to miss anything. I think so, we've discussed the delineation, we've discussed the wetlands as they exist, we've discussed our assessment of how those wetlands currently function and what their value is in terms of, you know, ecological value and, and other functional values of the wetland. We talked about the disturbance then and, and what that will do, how that will change the site. We've talked about the improvements to Glen Rock and how that will change the hydrology on the site anyway, which would, would impact any wetlands that were left on the site if we didn't provide for other, provide mitigation and other, other plans for how that water was going to move through the property. And then we've, and then I've described what our mitigation plan is for the site. So that's my presentation. If there are questions, certainly, I'm here to answer them.
So thank, thank you very much for your, your detailed presentation. Obviously, Johanna hasn't had a chance, I think, to really dig into this yet. I'm just going to ask some simple questions. You've obviously seen a lot of wetlands in your time in your profession. It sounds like wetlands B and C were created by the road that was put in, and wetland A, which is part of that pond area, is a much more sensitive area. So, in your professional opinion, wetland B and C are very low-functioning?
Yes, sir.
So, again, I'm not a wetland scientist, but if what you said the last time is no animals, no recharge, there was discharge, there is some vegetation, but some of it is invasive. The soil in the area, the first few inches might be some wetland, but that was created over the period of time.
As you say, over the years, I've worked on many wetlands, and I've been to, and, and we've had many opportunities to create wetland mitigation plans, a number here in, in, in Yorktown. And, and, and there've been a number of times where people have said to me, you can't create wetlands. Wetlands take hundreds of years to create, the certain, conditions have to be just right, and you can't go in disturbing them because, and that's true to a point, that's true for high-functioning wetlands. But you can ask any highway department or any DPW if you can create wetlands, and all you have to do is, is size a pipe incorrectly, or put it in the wrong spot, and water backs up behind it, and 20 years later, you have what could be defined as a wetland. And in my opinion, that's what we have here. We have a situation where a road was created for, as an emergency access, for fire and safety to get to a, a, a new condominium development, and an unforeseen forecast, unforeseen...
Consequence?
Consequence, thank you, of that construction was the, was the creation of two, these two wetlands on, on the western side. That's, that's what happened.
Okay, you also said wetlands as defined by our code. And I believe you said if this was looked at by the DEC or the Army Corps, they would not...
Right. The Army Corps has a, has a very specific definition of what a wetland is. You need to have the three, the three parameters. You need to have wetland soils, hydro soils, you need to have wetland vegetation, the dominance of wetland vegetation, and you need to have, need to have hydrology that drives the presence of those soils and the ability of those, that, that vegetation to be supported by the, the water that gets there. And again, wetland vegetation is very specific to certain conditions. The weather it is, certain species can adapt to that, other species can't. So that's why you have wetland species, and you have upland species, and not a whole lot in between. The town code of Yorktown defines a wetland as being soils or vegetation or hydrology. It's a, it's an either-or kind of situation. So you can have areas where water pools and creates a wet spot, but either the wetland soils haven't had time to develop, or there hasn't been enough organic input to the system in order to, for the soils to develop over time, that you don't have wetland soils. And without that, generally without wetland soils and, and the, and the type of substrate you need for wetland vegetation to grow, you don't get wetland vegetation. And in Yorktown, that's still regulated as a wetland. Mr. Barbara and I had a number of discussions about that over the years. And where it ended up is where we're still here, where there's a one-parameter approach to the, in town of Yorktown. And that's when, in my opinion, that's what we have here, is a one-parameter wetland that's hydrology only, but vegetation and, and soils are lacking to any great extent.
So in the, the photographs that were shown, this has happened over, it sounds like the period of 50 years.
Less, probably less, but yes, some between 40, 30 and 50 years, yeah.
And in your professional opinion, these are not quality wetlands or high-functioning?
Yes, sir.
The only part of that which is a little bit different is the pond area, which sounds like it started to get silted up, and it was actually headed towards a swamp.
That's what happens to ponds generally over time. Eventually, you know, between sediments and organic material, works their way downhill into a pond, then a pond becomes a marsh, then a pond becomes a swamp, over a lot of years, which is why people come in regularly to get their ponds dredged out, because eventually they want to become a swamp. They don't want to be a pond for very long, but yeah.
Okay, and you also...
Although the pond, and this, so I'm clear, this pond is still in relatively good condition. It is beginning to fill in, it's shallow compared to, I'm sure, when it was first built in the 20s. It, it is shown on that 1920 aerial. It's not shown on USGS mapping from the 1890s. So sometime between the 1890s and the 1920s is when this pond, either it was a, a swamp at the time, and they cut the trees down and excavated it out, or they figured out some other way to capture that water coming down the hill and created this pond.
All right, and you also said in respect, because there was back and forth about vernal pools last time. These do not exist here.
A, a, a small wetland can be a vernal pool, a small wetland isn't always a vernal pool. And what, what categorizes something as a vernal pool is whether it's providing the habitat for vernal pool species, primarily amphibians, to breed in the springtime. It's a very specific habitat, it's a very specific function of a wetland, and this, this wetland does not have that function.
Okay, and you also said you're doing more than the required mitigation.
Yeah, yeah, we are well over one-to-one, like I say, square foot-wise, and in my, again, in my opinion, well over two-to-one in terms of just vegetative diversity and habitat quality.
And the areas that you're creating, the function and the quality of these will be high?
That's the intent, that's the intent. And, and with every wetland creation, there is monitoring, there's, you know, there's a, a number of years generally where we watch these things to make sure they're developing the way they're supposed to. But yes, I've worked on probably 30 or 40 different mitigation sites and mitigation plans. We actually do design-build, so we, I've been out there literally in the pond, in, in the wetland as it's being developed, and we keep a very close eye on it and make sure everything's just working the way it's supposed to, yes.
So in theory, the pond gets dredged, you create these wetlands. Five years down the road after they're monitored and tweaked, what you have in quality and function is high-quality compared to, and obviously Johanna's going to have to verify and check all this, compared to a created wetland that is low-functioning and low-quality?
Yes, that's, that's my, yes.
That's your, that's your determination?
That's my determination as to what's going to happen, yes.
Okay. I'm sure you guys got questions, so.
This is like testifying before Congress.
I was, I was going to ask you how long you've been in the profession, but...
Are you now, are you now, or have you ever been a member?
Steve, I don't know if this is a question for you. Basically, you're taking wetlands B and C and diverting that water down Glen Rock Street to A? Hi, Steve. It sounds like you're taking existing wetlands B and C, the low-functioning ones, and diverting the water that currently flows into those down Glen Rock Street. You'll be doing good stuff to it, and then adding it to the stream, wetland A?
Yes.
That goes under that road that feeds the townhomes?
Yes.
Does that road on the townhomes, I don't know if this is a question for you, have sidewalks that people going over that bridge can enjoy this wonderful wetland that we've created here?
Is there a sidewalk on that side? No, there's no sidewalk on the street itself.
There's no sidewalk, so people are walking from their homes to these walking spaces just in the street?
That's correct. And there, there is a sidewalk, it's not, it's not on this plan here, but there is a sidewalk up to, along this edge, and I'm, I'm going to show you some modifications to the plan. But there's a sidewalk that'll take you up this far here, and that'll get you across, down, and across to the path. And, and you can also pick up the path here.
Yeah, on the southern, on the southern side of that two-unit building is also provision of, for the path to come to that, to the street, and then come down the hill and join the other path as it loops around the pond.
I mean, you want residents to walk into town and stuff, but you're not providing them with an area to walk on.
The part of the site, the eastern part of the site is fully pedestrian-friendly and connected. It's just the townhouse area that does not have sidewalks. It's just the townhouse area that does not have sidewalks.
What would it take, three extra feet of impervious surface?
Well, it's more on impervious surface. It's, you know, it's, we tried to, to keep the amount of impervious surface down. We felt there wasn't really totally necessary there. It's not gonna be a high-traffic, high-volume area for people to walk on the street. It's just gonna be just, you know, kinda their private road. So, that was the way we looked at it.
And if I could, before we get to site plan, I just wanna, for the time being, stick to the wetland part of this. Johanna, you have anything you wanna say at this point, or you still need, obviously, time?
Yeah, I, yes. So, every time, I think I blink, there's something new or I learn something new. One thing I was going to ask, and Steve, this would be to you. You had indicated at one point, and this is maybe more of a clarification item, but you had mentioned at one point that the pond is included in Wetland A. And I know we're not including the acreage of it in Wetland A's acreage. It's not shaded orange and being part of Wetland A. The function table that's attributed to Wetland A in the expanded EIF information, do the functions of the pond component, is that intertwined into that discussion?
No, I mean, it's intertwined in the discussion in the text, which I think you probably just got in the last day or so.
Yeah, when I sat down.
Yep. Okay. It's intertwined in the discussion, but it's not, it's not, it's not discussed in the actual functional assessment. The functions of the pond, like I say, is habitat for wading birds and waterfowl and reptiles, et cetera. That's discussed, but because it does function separately from the uphill, upstream part of Wetland A, I kinda kept it separated for that reason, and it's not being disturbed, I wanted to really focus function, on the functions of the areas that, that were closer to development.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody, I think, understood that Wetland A table was just focused on the functional components of that upstream Wetland A piece, of the piece that's shaded orange. So, obviously, there might be different functions that are being attributed to that pond location and to the buffer surrounding the pond, and that is covered in the text.
Certainly, the stormwater, stormwater and flood storage aspect is, you would rate that as high for the pond, because everything that comes through the site is...
Which is what I was thinking and why I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that some of the rankings, low and moderate, attributed to Wetland A are not including the pond function.
So, the pond itself would be high-functioning?
In several aspects, it would be.
Some of the criteria would certainly be different, I think, than, than looking at just the upstream portion.
Right. Okay, that's important. Thank you. Anything else on your end, Johanna?
No, I mean, there is one function that's missing from each table in that document. I think the groundwater recharge, but certainly, you know, the verbal discussion covered that.
Generally, and I've, I've used this model a number of times. Generally, if recharge isn't part of the system, then I, then I don't include it.
Just a deviation in number of eight, eight functions, and then we only cover seven in the table. So, just something I wanted to clarify as well. I mean, that's, I think I'm good, but certainly if anyone has other questions, we can continue to discuss.
Do the planning board any questions? You need a mic. You don't want Tom getting mad at you.
No, I just wanted a clarification. On the square footage you referred to, you're taking the square footage from A, B, and C as compared to the area that you're using for one-on-one mitigation?
Yes. Well, the square footage of disturbance to A, B, and C.
Right. So, I'm saying you didn't delete A and B because they're low-functioning. You're still taking all three and mitigating against all three.
That's what I'm saying, because, you know, as far as the town code goes, and technically, we are disturbing those wetlands and they are regulated, so we wanna make sure we're considering those in the numbers, yes.
It's a lot. Anybody else from the conservation portion?
I am curious. Hi, I'm Diane Dreyer. I'm curious to know where the buffer for the original pond is in relation to the, the new plan, because we would just like to understand that, because we really feel that there is a, maybe the reduction of some of these buildings outside of the buffer could help this entire mitigation and your stormwater. Decreasing the impervious coverage would be more beneficial.
So, the buffer for the pond, that's this, this line here. And it goes somewhere back in here. It gets, it's lost because it gets eaten up by the buffer for wetlands A, B, and C, which is out here. But the buffer from the pond is somewhere out in here and follows this area.
Yeah. On that, on that western side of the pond, we're not increasing impervious surface in the buffer. The impervious surface in the buffer of those buildings, they're outs, they're well outside of the 100-foot buffer to the pond.
But they're not...
The mitigation area will be in the...
In the mitigation, they will be in the mitigation area.
Right.
And they will be in the original Wetland A.
Yes.
Yes. Which is right here.
Yep.
Maybe we consider eliminating those buildings in any of those buffers to decrease the impervious cover, which would then help you with your mitigation as well as your stormwater practice? Which I'm sure Joe might have to talk a little bit more about that, because I'm really confused on how the stormwater from the development is gonna get to your practice when it's, you know, you're going around the pond through the new created marsh?
No. Well, we're, we're gonna have a drainage collection system, right? We're just gonna transport, collect the water along the new roadway for the, the townhouses, pick up the roof leaders from the townhouses and take it around to the... So, where's your, which one did you have? The last one we were looking at, the last slide we were looking at. This one? Yeah, we could use this. So, we have a stormwater collection system, which is gonna pick up all the runoff here and take it to our pocket wetland area here. Everything on the east side of the site is gonna go to a infiltration system, which is gonna be located underneath the parking area here. So, we've, we've managed to capture almost every square foot of impervious area and bring it to a stormwater practice.
Okay. So, how is the, are you doing any correction to the outflow of the pond? And now that we've increased all of this, how is that outflow gonna be managed?
We don't feel we're, we're gonna need to do that, because what, what we're going to be doing is changing the hydrology. In other words, we're, not all that water as, that's running down that hillside now is gonna go to the pond. We're gonna capture it and take it around. The only water that's gonna continue to go there is what's coming off of Glen Rock Street. So, we're actually reducing the amount of water that's in the watershed of the pond.
Okay. But in a significant storm, your, your created marsh is gonna get really full. Your stormwater practice has got an overflow.
Yeah.
And then it's all gonna flow into the major pond, and then what's going to happen next?
Right. Yeah. Well, we may need to analyze that, but at this point, we're not, we don't think that it's, the net, the net difference is gonna make an impact on the pond.
I think it needs to be analyzed. That's my recommendation to the board.
What is it that you're analyzing?
The outflow of the pond and where it is going and all of this extra water and capturing of the impervious stormwater that's coming down here. If, how is it gonna be managed? I mean, is it just gonna go gushing out and where is it going to?
Yeah, it's not the case at all. As I said, all the impervious surface on the west side of the site, which is the townhouse section, is going to stormwater management basin here. So, it's gonna be full detention as well as water quality treatment here.
To what storm?
To the 100-year storm.
100-year?
Yeah. Yep.
Is that currently there, Joe?
What's that?
Is that currently there? Or that's something you're creating?
We're creating that to handle, to handle all the impervious surface that's going down there. All that, that whole hillside there.
And that's rooftops and roadway?
Rooftop and roadway, all the impervious surfaces.
So, the...
And then, so that, you know, there's go, you know, I guess to go back to what you were saying, is the pond gonna be analyzed? Yes. It's part of the analysis. It's part of the overall analysis.
You just, you need to understand the outflow and the volume that's gonna be coming out of it.
You're right, but it, it is built into the equation of what, of the analysis of the, you know, especially, as I said, the west side of the site versus the east side of the site, which is kinda two watersheds.
Just the comment that by putting the stormwater basin in front of the pond, right? You're taking away the area that people can walk in. That's mostly lawn now. So, you're changing kinda the aspect of the site into the pond itself, because that will be vegetated to some degree, the stormwater basin?
Right. So, that's gonna, it's, it's gonna become a site feature. No, it's not gonna be an open lawn anymore.
Right.
But, but we are enhancing the experience going around the pond with the, with the pathway system that's not there now. You know, a defined pathway system that's not there. Seeding areas and, you know, landscaping the heck out of it to really enhance that area. So, no, there will not be a lawn area anymore, but it will be a feature. And it's, it's, you know, it's going to be, and Steve can speak to that more than I can. The way these are planted, they're planted to become, at the end, are gonna become something attractive and, and something of high quality. It's not gonna be, just become a, you know, an open, traditional detention pond.
Right. And it's being maintained by this development?
It has to be. Yeah, the, the, the property owner has, a declaration is gonna be, has to be filed where they're going, they're responsible to maintain it in perpetuity.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's important.
Joe, just so if anybody's watching, doesn't understand, when you design these stormwater systems, at the end of the day, tell us what the goal is or what you're required to have as in stormwater leaving the site?
Well, I mean, we, DC has put standards in place under the general permit for stormwater discharges. So, we have to meet runoff reduction require, requirements, which is green infrastructure. They prescribe a certain amount of green infrastructure you have to provide to reduce the amount of runoff. We have to meet water quality standards, and because we're in the New York City watershed, the, outside of the New York City watershed, there are lower standards as far as water quality. You only have to do the 90 percentile rainfall, which is the rainfall that occurs 90% of the time. But instead, we have to do it for the one-year storm, which is considerably more. It's, it's almost two and a half times the amount of runoff that we have to collect and treat. And then on top of that, we have to, we cannot increase the, the volume or peak rate of discharge up to the, up to the 100-year storm. And in most cases, we always go a little above that anyway, because it just, it just works, it always works out that way. You know, you're not hitting the number right on. We're always a little bit under. So, at the end of the day, that's, that's what we want, we wanted to meet. And, and now you have a, you have a site and you have impervious area on the site, you have buildings, you have roadways, you have parking. That's not getting treated at all. Now, everything on the site, all the impervious areas are gonna be treated. So, there's a net gain downstream, in, in the downstream system, which eventually, we believe, ends up in Hallix Mill.
So, the water that's gonna, because what people always are fearful of is now we're gonna have all this impervious area. The water's gonna speed off the site quicker than it did before, and it's gonna flood downstream. And anything below this is gonna be impacted.
We, the town engineer and the DEP have to review and sign off on our stormwater permits, and they're gonna make sure that that does not happen.
You're not increasing the runoff. So, when we looked at, for purposes of density, the surrounding developments, I think from what I remember, the density was the same in the neighboring properties. Those were older developments. So, the practices or lack thereof on those developments are much different than what's here.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, for example, we, we have all those properties that are coming off the French, off of Frontvedge Hill all the way down to Glen Rock Street. All that runoff is hitting Glen Rock Street and uncontrolled goes on to this. We're gonna grab that water, channel it, and put it through a hydro, hydrodynamic separator, which will provide some treatment of that discharge that's curling now going untreated before it gets to the pond. So, it's gonna be, not only are we improving what's going on on the site, we're gonna be improving some of the runoff that's coming on to the site from Glen Rock Street.
And the regulations that you're talking about, they've obviously changed over the last 10 years significantly? So, something that was 10 years ago isn't what's today?
Yeah, I mean, it, well, yeah, I think it was 2015. In 2015, they put the runoff reduction standards in place, which was green infrastructure. And before that, you only had to address water quality. Now, you have stricter, stricter standards since 2015.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else from the conservation part?
Can I make a comment about, just going back to the comment on buffer? One other thing I just wanna put out there, and Steve and I had talked about the buffer of the wetlands just on Monday. Seems like it was so long ago. So, in the town code, it's not just looking at the functions of the wetlands themselves. It's also considering the functionality of the surrounding 100-foot buffer from the wetlands, which, as we indicated, would include that pond area as well. So, Steve and I had talked about that on Monday. That was something that was to be added into that expanded EIF document, which I'm assuming that additional dialogue is in there and discussion is in there. But as we're looking at, you know, modified design plans, that is something that is in the town's code to consider in addition to just the net, no net loss of wetland itself. So, looking at that functionality of the buffer is something that should be addressed and accommodated by the mitigation plan that is proposed.
Thank you. You have anything to add, John?
Not at this time, no.
All right. So, Mr. Glor...
Let me just quickly go through the changes that we've made on the site plan. So, we'll start up here. So... Okay. Quickly, as, as we had presented previously, we eliminated some units. We eliminated N-units from these buildings here. We eliminated the two units that were here, were here. We pulled the cul-de-sac down, and now we've added those four units up at the end there. As Steve said, we moved these buildings. I don't know why this building's not showing up here, but we've moved these buildings closer to... This one disappeared, but we, we've moved these buildings closer to Underhill and opened this whole area up in here. Another change was eliminating these two buildings here. And these parking spaces were previously on this side of the roadway. We've now flipped them to this side. So, that allows to have, and this was Robin's suggestion, a nice continuous sidewalk connection from the corner of the... From the corner here. So, it allows a nice clean connection over to the eastern part of the site. Additionally, we brought in the changes that Phil Greeley's office had presented as far as improving this, the maneuvering in this intersection here. However, we made an additional change, and this was something that was discussed with John and Robin, was there were, these four parking spaces were originally in front of the, the Underhill... of the, um, the Underhill house, we've now relocated them to this location here. And as we had presented the last time, the, this building has got, gotten smaller and increased the, the spacing between the back of the Underhill house and the apartment building. And we've added this retaining wall here, the, the two tunnels that come out from underneath the Underhill house, one here, one here, are now have, are fully exposed and fully accessed through this, through this area here. And that, that's the, those are the major changes to the site plan that I just wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Joe, when you say the tunnels will be fully exposed and highlighted, so they will become kind of architectural highlights? How will they be utilized?
Yes, I, I, I think it's more of a preservation thing, we're, we're gonna preserve them, they're, they're an interesting feature, right? So, and they're gonna be accessible if they were, if there were any reason to make them accessible, you know, whatever future use of this may be. But th- this area here will be kept in its, as is condition. Who else?
Please.
I, I just wondered what the bold lines by the road crossing of Wetland A represent? Are those gray lines?
Oh, those are retaining walls.
Retaining walls, okay.
Those are retaining walls to preserve that, that color.
Okay, on both sides, they kind of, they both view.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
How, you said you reduced the apartment building, the buildings. Did you do it in square footage or in height? What, what did you reduce?
In, in square footage, the, the, the building has gotten smaller in, in front-to-back direction as well as side-to-side direction.
Is that going to allow you to save more of the existing trees along the perimeter?
Yes, so what that allowed us to do is, um, let's get, um, where am I? What that allowed us to do is pull the parking lot further away from the property line and gives us a better chance to preserve some of these trees along.
That would be very nice. Keep that look.
So, yeah, so, so the way, the way we, we held this back edge of the building and this left edge of the building, so all of the, um, changing in size was in, in this area here and on this side.
Okay, we have three other topics we wanna hit tonight. One is recreation, um, density, and then we wanna show you some of the architecture that we've been working with, with the, with Abaca.
I see Pat from the rec board, you wanna come on up, Pat?
I'm Matt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're all here.
All right, sorry. Joe, do we have this for the? Have you all seen any of this yet?
Yes. So for the next presentation, I'll be talking about the recreational fee. The map that you have, we're gonna use that net for the density, but I'm just asking, what would be helpful right now was to look at this document that you, that you just received. That's for the recreational purposes, and then the map will be for density.
No, we'll get you one. Okay.
He's got it. Bob, he's got it.
We can always, we'd of course, provide additional copies after this meeting. So, let's pick up where we left off at, at the last meeting. The last meeting, when I discussed this topic, I informed the board that our site plan was going to demonstrate how we, I'm sorry, let me back up a step before I go into how we demonstrate compliance. Let's review what the statute says. The statute, your, the Yorktown Code statute presents an either, a set-aside component or a payment component if the set-aside, if the development fails to meet the set-aside. It's not a choice, right? It's a trigger. If you, if you meet the set-aside requirement of the code, then you have satisfied the recreational requirement, okay? It's not a discretionary issue, where you might say, we want the set-aside, but we prefer now to have a cash influx, we're gonna, we're gonna require a payment instead of the set-aside. The code, the code requires, first, that the applicant complied with the set-aside square footage, and if that square footage is not met, then the payment will kick in, okay? This is different from examples, for example, you may have communities that have an affordable housing set-aside, where a developer may elect to do a payment in lieu of affordable set-aside. Or you may have a transit-oriented development that has a parking requirement, but now codes may have a payment in lieu of parking spaces, where you can actually reduce your parking spaces by this payment. That is not what's happening here. What is happening here in the Yorktown Code is set aside the square footage or you pay a fee, okay? So what we are showing here, I'm sorry, and then, in that code, in the set-aside requirements, when you look to the overlay district, the overlay district code that is governing this project, it states, this is a specific and explicit call-out in the overlay legislation for the Yorktown Heights overlay district. It states that the required recreation for multifamily units built within mixed-use development projects shall be as required in the R3 zone, except that the planning board may modify this requirement due to special circumstances. So we are governed here, and this is gonna be relevant in the density portion in a minute, but we are governed here by an explicit call-out where the overlay reaches back and makes sure that the recreational code gets pulled in and is part of this development. So with that established, what we have, it's pretty clear. We have the burden as the applicant to come in and show you, we have met the set-aside square footage, or we owe you some money. Our position has been from the beginning, that we have met the set-aside square footage. I will add to this discussion that in a, in a, in a demonstration of good faith, trying to come in as a good neighbor, we are in negotiations with the town, with members of the recreational board, to make a donation, okay? What we consider to be a sizable donation to the recreational board, to the fee, even though, as you can see in that chart up there, and as we'll go through in a minute, even though we don't trigger this requirement, we are still agreeable to be making a donation. And originally, I had proposed that perhaps that donation, that recreational fee donation, would be a part of the tax abatement number that we are seeking to be reimbursed for. That is not going to happen. The donation, if and when it's negotiated, will be a straight donation, not part of any recapture from a tax, a proposed tax abatement. So if you take a look at what's in front of you, and I'm gonna look up to the screen, we have, the first column is the recreational requirements in the R3 zone. These are the three requirements. These are the three set-asides. The first one, square, at least four hundred square feet of usable open space is provided on the site for each dwelling unit for play area and other outdoor living uses, okay? If you do the math, the second column, what's required, one hundred and forty-eight units, that fifty-nine thousand two hundred square feet is what we are required to provide. In your third column there, provided, if you go, we, we show our math there, and we're providing actually ninety, over ninety-five thousand square feet. So we're well above the first trigger, the first requirement. The second issue has to do with play area, usable play area for the residents. Twelve hundred square foot play area. Here, we have two designated, two eligible play areas, where it's almost ten thousand square feet of eligible play area that we are offering. And then finally, this is a set-aside, the last portion, and the, going back to the first column, the third requirement, it's a set-aside of ten percent of the site for the provision of park and other and/or recreational facilities, okay? That, by our calculation, we are required to do sixty thousand forty-five square feet. And what we're offering is seventy-one thousand five hundred and fifty-five square feet. So even though the overlay district allows us the opportunity to request a variation of these numbers, we do not, we are not invoking that jurisdiction, your flexibility as provided under the overlay. We are providing in excess, in all three situations, we are providing in excess square footage of the required set-aside play area and open space. Therefore, when you read the statute, we'd never trigger the four thousand dollar per door payment, that is the alternative to the set-aside. I think it's a pretty straightforward issue, I really have nothing more to add, I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, the town attorney's office has looked into this and agrees with this calculation. And the interpretation as well.
Thank you.
Do you wanna say anything?
Yeah, would you mind?
Please.
Okay, I, first thing, I will agree that we are talking to each other, and I appreciate the developer's willingness to discuss with us and try to work something out. So, that said, I, I also wholeheartedly agree, the ambiguity in this law, as I pointed out when we first were, received a draft of the law, and what our opinion was of it, and that was the first thing we said. The ambiguity, it created, created too much ambiguity. I said it to you when we met last time, you guys have a lot of authority under the overlay district, and you can, basically, the way I read it, you can do everything you want. So, that said, if you're holding to the R3 district, I disagree with the interpretation of what, what this gentleman had just said. There are two parts of it. You have the four hundred square feet, plus the twelve hundred for the playground. In addition to that, you have the second part. And if, the, the part as far as saying it's, it's an either-or, it, or as far as a trigger for it, it's very clear, it has a very good, another ambiguity, option out, or for other reasons. So again, what other reasons you guys wanna pick, that you wanna either take, so you have the first four hundred square feet, and the math works out perfect that it's very close to each other. I, that's what I did last time when we had the first meeting here. So, they're both about one point three, one point three acres. So they're supposed to give one point three acres for the first part of the code of R3, one point three acres for the second part of the code for, for R3, and it's my understanding that that's supposed to be deeded to the town. It becomes parkland, it becomes part of parkland. It's my understanding that none of this is deed, it's still being owned by the developer. So, that's something that I think you have to consider, that's all.
If I could just comment on, on that, the deed issue was something we had discussed early on, um, not with specificity to the recreational issue, but, but the, but the open space and the, and the pond and the walking trails was discussed to be, um, the issue of whether or not we would deed it to the town was brought up, and it had become clear that it was an advantage to the town. As we had just discussed with the maintenance, the, the ownership is intentionally remaining in the private hands, so that the town does not ha, does not incur any maintenance costs in perpetuity. So the deed, there are other ways, respectfully, to make sure that this area remains open in perpetuity. If, if that's the issue, there are things we can do, and things we are going to do, and starting number one, with your conditions in your approval resolution, if we get there, hopefully, but, you know, a, a site plan conditional resolution, and then things after that, can ensure that the, um, that the area stays open, but it's not, respectfully disagree, it's not a deeded requirement, it's just an open space requirement. And I, I would just say that the, um, we differ on the interpretation or the, or for other reasons in that, the bottom section here in the first column, really, that goes to, it's, it's an imposition on a site, on private property, to set aside ten percent for public access. So if you don't have the ability, if it's impractical to set aside that ten percent, if it's impractical or for other reasons, that the developer can't set aside the ten percent, then you would get into the fee. It's not other reasons, that, that other reasons is connected to the imprint, the question of whether it's not, it's practical to set that aside. It's not that if a budget is running low, and I mean this with all due respect, I'm, I'm not trying to make, be flippant with, with anyone's budget, but if a budget's running low, and it's more desirable to have a cash payment, that is not, that doesn't qualify as an other reason under, under this section. The other reason is just strictly tied to the practicality of the set-aside.
I just, wouldn't work with, I'm sorry, and then I'll stop talking. The, uh, as far as the other reasons interpretation, I'm not a lawyer, I don't, it doesn't give any definition, I'm just telling it's ambiguous. The second part is if all these recreational amenities that they're taking, they're taking credit for are fully open to everybody in the town of Yorktown, I'll shut up. If they're being specific to the development, then you have an amenity to make your development more wealthy, you don't have a public park, that is the intention of the law. That's it, that's all I have to add, thank you.
Thank you.
I have, uh, you reference various colors on that chart that's up there, where are those shown, on what map? And the other part of the question I have is, you've got a twelve hundred foot, square foot play area, which is, you're proposing to satisfy that with a swimming pool?
Two pools, yes, almost ten thousand feet of, of the pool and the pool area.
And they're inside or outside pools?
They are outside pools.
So what happens in the winter, in the colder weather? There's no play area then?
Every indoor, uh, location will have at least twenty-two hundred square feet of indoor amenity, which could be club room, um, exercise, um, TV area, and it, it's going to be a club room in each apartment building and in the condo. Okay?
So, does your, you have a map that shows these? Joe, you have a map that shows that open space usage?
Yeah.
We delineate between indoor play area and outdoor play area?
I don't know.
Seasonally? I mean, that's, seems to me the play area, if it's outdoors.
Yeah.
Outdoors. You wanna play in the snow, you play in the snow.
But you can't swim in the snow.
No, you walk around the pool.
You can't ski in the pool.
You can skate on the pond.
Just thinking.
This is a little bit older generation of the map, but it makes the point.
The pool's not excluded also in the code. I mean, I hear what you're saying about a seasonal aspect to it, but it is eligible under the, under the code as the play area.
I just, I just, I wanted to understand and make that clear, that that's what you're proposing. And, oh, this is the map that relates to the?
That's correct. And it does not, again, it's a little bit of an older generation of, of the map, but, and in that calculation, it does not include the clubhouse, it's just the, uh, green space. So the brighter, the brighter green is the open space, um,
What's the yellow?
The lighter green is behind the units, and that's usable space for each of the units. And then the darker green are the, uh, the pool areas.
Can I ask a question, is that okay?
Ah, it's a work session, I'm sorry. Well, you're on the board.
Yeah, well, is that, I mean, is that okay?
I, you have to ask Sergio. Sergio, I forgot you're in the audience.
You gotta, you gotta get a mic.
You wanna say it in Italian? Oh, okay.
You gotta get a mic.
Yeah, no hands, no hands. Tom will get mad at you.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, so, I, I'm hearing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cover up the town board, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a normal constituent. So I hear the language, and the one beautiful thing about law is that there's always a loophole or there's some way to read it, and that's great. Um, and I also know how to do business, so we're gonna do business the right way. So my question is, even though we're talking about the square footage, and it meets the code in play, in open space, in beautification, in upgrading and following our progress with preservation, I'm not gonna be able to come over and walk into your gym and work out there, right? Or am I gonna get a FOB because I'm a resident of Yorktown? So most likely, although the developer will be maintaining it, the HOA fees and all the fees that are gonna come with living at such a luxury place with wonderful amenities will cover that. And yes, as a constituent, I will be able to walk around, and I will be able to go visit that gorgeous pond, but I'm not really sure I'm even able to swim in the pool. So it's open space for the residents, which I think is a great amenity. It's, you know, I told you, I'm gonna probably move somewhere where it's fifty-five and above and there's a pool. But with that being said, I guess what I wanna understand is, when it comes to a rec fee, I thought it was a way to create more public space. fee, I thought it was a way to create more public space, and open space for the public. And I understand that this is a great asset, and this project is going to not only put us on the map, but it's going to bring us to the next level. However, I'd like to understand how this play area takes away from the rec and fee, the recs fees, regardless of how it's read, okay? Because there are areas that are considered under this open space that are only to be utilized by those who live there. And frankly, if I'm gonna live in one of these gorgeous townhouses, I don't want, and I love you all, Yorktown, random Yorktowners hanging out in front of my townhouse, like, I don't want you frolicking in my driveway, I don't want that. And I'm not saying that that's not what, I mean, yes, I know, we, we stand for family, Willie, I know, but I'm just saying, I don't really know if I like that, and I've got some rambunctious boys, do you want them tossing a ball around the pond while you have somebody reading a book? So I'm not saying that there isn't beautification, and I'm not saying that this project hasn't gone above and beyond in wetlands and preservation of what this town stands for, and preservation even in the buildings that they are saving, and the amount of delicacy, because let's face it, Galero's not gonna put his name on something he's not proud of. However, I'd like the lea-, the like, the layman's terms to understand how just because my numbers all add up, parks and rec doesn't get a rec fee. And if you can explain that to me, I'd be a lot calmer. I mean, I won't look calmer, but I will be a lot calmer.
I, I'd like to add, to try to help clarify that. Um, I think a misconception that is sort of somewhat natural in a discussion of a statute of this nature, is that what you just raised, there's a misperception or misconception that we are required to open the gym with FOBs or to open the pools. The statute, the first part of this statute, where the playground and the open space as it relates to the private property interest, is to your town, in a, in somewhat of a visionary way, wanted to make sure the quality of life of people who are moving into multifamily developments was protected, so that you weren't moving into some, like, late 70s Soviet era, you know, concrete block without any amenity. So the first part of the statute is not to invite members of the public into a workout space, it's to ensure that the people who are living there have a healthy and recreational amenity. And we've satisfied that. And so we're not, we're not inviting, it, it's not contemplated to have, um, strangers, if you will, interfering with, uh, private property. What is contemplated and required on, sure.
To clarify, that requirement does not have any kind of a payout associated of money to the recreation commission?
Yes, it would. I believe it would. Yes.
That very first requirement you just talked about, that we provide for the residents onsite?
Um, I'll, let me see. It, no, it's the second, you're right, it's the second, it's the open space, it's the failure to meet the open space.
So I, I think we need to make sure that that was a separator in people's minds, that the, the requirement to provide for people's own use who live there.
Yes.
Is what you're addressing right now.
Right, this second, yes. I'm addressing, we are not, I am addressing the code visionary requirement, making sure that recreational space, open space, healthy spaces for children to play are built in, are required under any multifamily development. Multifamily development, that's what's, that's the distinction here.
But those have nothing to do with the rec fee?
Ho-, no, 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 they do not, they do not. But, but I, yes, there's two parts, but what I'm, I'm trying to address this conception that because we're having a walking trail and an amenity around this beautifully restored pond, that we're also required to bring people into our other private amenities. We, we are not, we are compliant with the code to make sure that the quality of life of the people who are moving in there is insured by, by use of open space and recreational space. The second part of this statute is somewhat more burdensome for a private property owner, right? And thi- this is where this statute kinda rubs up a little bit against private property rights, because we are required, without any reduction in assessment or anything, we are required to put a 10% set aside for access to the public. Now, that requirement, with the set aside and the passive play area and this, and, and, you know, with the design, the current landscaping design, with the newly instituted walking trails, seating areas, newly restored pond, newly restored, uh, as, as Joe said earlier, the newly, newly created, uh, wetland landscaping feature, all, that aspect is, we are inviting the public on, onto our, onto the new, onto the private property, we are paying for the maintenance of it, and we exceed the set aside requirement. So I think the, the nature of the statute was, let's protect the quality of life of Yorktown residents, let's protect the quality of life of our private residents, about Yorktown public, and then the private property residents and multifamilies. Both of those things we have complied, I'm sorry, just, both of those things we have complied with. And if, if you didn't comply with that, then you pay into the town, and that money from that recreational fee, by the way, something we didn't discuss, it wasn't really germane until right now, that money that you would pay into that recreational fee then was direct, you couldn't use it to fix potholes, you direct that into other recreational facilities in the town. So we're not triggering that. You know, we're, we're, we're here on the other side, I'm sorry, please.
No, 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 so Mr. Blanchard, I've had meetings, obviously, like, and I've, I've discussed this, so I can't have my son's birthday party around the pond. I'm sure that at some point, as much as it's open space, I'm not able to have a birthday party around the pond. And I've actually even said, it's like, I, the pond, when you, when they bought this property, the property has this amazing feature of this pond. It comes with a beautification to why we're going to be able to charge what we charge for these amazing units, right? You got a little sanctuary right there. So my question here is, let, now that we're all very clear, the playhouses and the workout spaces and the beautiful indoors, keeping our enjoyment and quality of life, belong to the homeowners who buy and live there. And the purpose why we invite development into our town is 'cause it spills over in the well-being of the entire town. And I believe in, that was the intention or the vision, whether it was articulated correctly or not, I was not on the board when the law was passed, that that was the vision for this actual, um, this actual law of open space. So again, I do remember back in December, I was saying the same exact thing, it was like, I love these paths and I love this pond, and I see I get to do a little bit of a cut through, but how does this actually consider to be open space? And I'm also a very reasonable businesswoman, if you're telling me it meets the law, then it meets the law, and the law needs to be looked at. But I also know the side conversations that I've had, which I really do despise, at the end of the day, I wanna be clear, the paths and the pond do not fill open space in the eyes of what I believe this law stood for. And I'm just curious if you believe that the part that is open space does consider itself, you know, valid, and why you do not qualify for the rec phase?
Well, I, I think we, we have some guidance, right? Open space is a very ambiguous in general terms.
Right.
So we're looking at park slash passive recreation area. Um, and as, in terms of, of presenting a plan that, that I think we can, a, as, as the applicant, we can confidently and legitimately say, we are presenting you with a, a more than a 10% set aside of a park and passive recreational area, I, I, I think we are comfortable in, in saying we meet that requirement.
So if, if I, I'll, I'll turn to the attorneys.
If I, if I wanna come to this passive open area, where am I gonna park? On the site plan? I mean, what is open to the public to park, so that?
Anywhere in the, the adjacent areas that, there, there are some spaces that are gonna be designated for, uh, public parking.
So I'm gonna bring my Girl Scout troop of 15 kids and one of their moms, I got like 25 people all of a sudden, to come and enjoy and learn about the nature of this, this marsh. Where am I gonna put all these cars?
Well, you, uh, well, let's, let's go back to the traffic improvement, right? Where we're sitting right here, this is a public, this is a municipal parking lot. The traffic improvement, the pedestrian improvements of the intersection that we're undertaking, that, by the way, I, I just wanna add it to the record, far exceed the impact, we're gonna be improving this intersection, it's gonna have a much more engaged and safe pedestrian walkway.
But that's not what I'm asking, you're not asking about the intersection.
Nope, I'm answering the question.
I'm asking about where am I coming? I'm coming to use the open space that you're designating as open space.
And what I'm saying is...
My Girl Scout troop, and where am I parking?
You're parking in close proximity, and you're using the improved intersection that we have undertaken, so that you could...
I'm gonna park on the road in the intersection?
Or you can park right there.
Yeah, or you can park right here, we're reserving spots along this edge here for anyone to use.
So there's internal, internal onsite parking.
Ten, ten people can come at once.
Or there's, or, or there are spots...
How is that being reserved?
Right, so, or there are spots over here, if, if it's not in the evening when the restaurant is in use, because that's what these spaces are for. So there, there, there is parking, alright.
There's parking onsite, and there's also municipal parking across the street that would benefit with a newly constructed pedestrian, uh, uh, walkway, an intersection. We have two things that are going on here, we have the set aside, we have code compliant parking, we are, this project is in compliance with the recreational fee requirement and with all the parking requirements.
So, pocket parks, where we've had developments before, those were donated by the developer?
Yes.
So how did that work?
That's not multifamily development either, right?
No, it's residential.
Those were part, okay, little difference in the subdivision regulations, slight difference. Those mostly were set asides from subdivision regulations and subdivisions, and they were mostly deeded to the town, um, which it does talk about that, but I'm going to point out that I believe in practice in the town and supported by the town law and even our own regulations, they, the set aside does not necessarily need to be publicly owned, or even in some cases publicly accessible. So I'll give you a couple of examples. Sultana Park, the Sultana Pool, it was a subdivision, it was private land with a private pool for the private owners of that subdivision, and that qualified and satisfied the recreation requirement that that subdivision created, and we have to remember that. There's an evaluation of recreational needs here that are created by the development, and your donation, in whatever form it comes, is to offset that demand that's created. So to answer the question at hand is, those were subdivisions, they were created under the 10% set aside, evaluated by the board for accessibility, which in the subdivision regula-, regulations, there's specific requirements, and then it was built out, uh, to whatever it was, whether it was a pocket park with a baseball field, or a playground, or a basketball court, and then deeded to the town.
So, I mean, if I could, uh, just interject, um, so I, I think what, what the developer's trying to explain is, as far as parking goes, is that there, there is going to be, um, municipal parking next door, it's here now. Um, and you would be able to park there. And I think in conjunction with the traffic improvements, which I believe is, is critical and need to happen, uh, it's not gonna be this crazy intersection that you're crossing. And so, you know, you could potentially park next door here, walk up, have your walk on the path with your Girl Scout troop, and there's also gonna be parking onsite. If there's not enough parking onsite, you have it to spill over on the municipal parking lot. And I think that's what they're trying to explain. I understand that, um, you're not required, you, you've met the expectations of the law. Uh, obviously, that has met with some, um, uh, you know, pushback. I appreciate you guys trying to, uh, come up with some kind of a donation, um, that you would, you would be donating, uh, toward, uh, parks and recreation for other services and stuff like that. So I think we need to flush out, um, what that would be, understanding full well that there's, uh, precedence, that it doesn't have to be deeded, I understand all of that, and, and this has been an ongoing discussion, and we're flushing it out, and we have the, our own town attorney looking at the law as well. So I say we, you know, we understand where you guys are coming from, let's figure out if there's some kind of middle ground that we could meet at, um, and we appreciate your forthcomingness with, you know, some type of a donation, I think we need to discuss that, flush that out, figure it out, figure out what would be, you know, acceptable, and if that works out, that would be a bonus for us, and we appreciate, you know, uh, that type of generosity. But that's where I think we're at right now. I think we really need to see if, what the number's going to be on your contribution, um, knowing full well what the law reads and how it reads, and having a, a deep dive with our, our own town attorney from our own perspective, and we appreciate you, you're well-respected, I'm not doubting you. Uh, but I think the town needs to hear from its own town attorney, and we need to make our own evaluation, and then once that happens, we could, you know, compare notes. And I think that's where we're at, 'cause I don't think we're gonna get any further here tonight with this discussion.
Well, I, I would have...
I think we've come a long way.
If I could just jump in for a minute, 'cause we're hearing a lot of things, and I just wanna make clear, it sounds like there's meetings going on with the Parks and Rec Board. The planning department, I don't know that they've been included, I know the planning board has not, so we're not aware of these, these, these deals being made, or what they in, involve. So I agree, I think we gotta...
Well, your, your board will be making the determination, no other board or entity will.
I think we, we have to, with all due respect, we have to, I agree, we should pause at this point, there's a lot of information, it was back and forth, uh, I, I think we've heard from our attorney and Mr. Blanchard that they're in agreement with the, the way the code reads, so I think this is, we've gotten a lot of information on this, I think we should take a, a pause here, uh, absorb what we've heard, and move on to the density portion, which I don't know you wanna talk about.
Rich, I'd just like to, I just wanna clarify something, as one board member, I'm not speaking for the whole board, but I, I think the general consensus has been that a recreation, um, requirement is to mitigate the impact of the development that we're talking about.
Correct.
So new, new homeowners are gonna come in, and it's their impact on our recreation facilities that has to be mitigated. That doesn't mean that this developer, or any developer, has to fix something that already exists, or we have to make up a shortfall in somebody's budget, as was suggested by, to this board previously.
Correct.
Uh, also, I'm under the impression that we cannot take, if there were to be a monetary contribution, those monies cannot be used to fix other problems in other recreation facilities that exist now. So that's not, that's not something that's gonna satisfy their concern, and I'm not diminishing their concern. Uh, but it, to me, it's mitigating the impact that your development is gonna have on recreation. So the, the way the law is written, I think, was to mitigate that, and in terms of the, the amount of land, in some cases, uh, the land does not get improved, in some cases it's donated for other purposes, or, and maybe there is no parking, there is not a requirement that you have 15 reserved parking spaces to go walk through something that's owned by the development. So if you have a development that has a piece of property that is going to have improvements on it that the public is welcome to, if it were not that case, then the Parks and Recreation Commission would have to then maintain that, if it was owned by the town.
Well, that's correct.
Further aggravate their budget problems.
That's correct, and, and one thing I'd, I'd like to just, uh, maybe not push back, but one thing I'd, I'd like to sort of modify, Mr. Chairman, what you just said, um, the fee, the, the negotiation of, of a donation to the Parks Department i- in, in, in the spirit of this statute was, is undertaken by us outside really of this site plan, because, and not to put Mr. Glathkar on the spot right now, but earlier, I heard him say that he agrees, in your packet that I handed out, there was also my memo, I presented a position memo on, on how we comply with the statute. Um, the town attorney's office has stated, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that they agree with my interpretation, that we are in full compliance with the recreational statute. And so while I understand there's always a concern to digest information, we, of course, are trying to sort of check things off our secret checklist as we move forward. And one thing I'd like for us to do this evening is recognize that a negotiation for donation is outside of site plan, if we all agree, and it seems that we do, that we meet the recreational requirement. So rather than press pause on this issue, I'd rather, I'd see if we could have a consensus that we agree with the...
And I'm gonna tell you, I don't like being sideswiped, alright? So we're hearing about this now, so let's pause, so we can get the flow, and I appreciate the, the suggestion of a donation, we're just hearing about this for the first time. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an environmentalist. We need time to absorb this and see where we go from here, and we'll go over it with Jim.
That's fine.
But we need time.
Well, look, we weren't meaning to sideswipe anyway, it's just that...
I get, so I just, when you hear something, you know, if we told you that, that, uh, the state's coming in and widening 118 next week, and you had no idea about it, we brought it to attention tonight, I'm sure you guys wouldn't be happy about it.
That's a night, that's a good example.
Give us the time, give us the time to absorb this and work with our attorney to, to take a look at it. Thank you.
Will say.
Richard, one last thing I would say is that Jim is the planning board attorney? I don't know about the town board attorney has weighed in on this yet. No, in terms of the compliance, I heard Jim...
We spoke about it on the phone yesterday.
Okay.
Alright, so in reference to density.
Sure. Reference to density, the density issue is a, is a two-part question. The first part is kind of a threshold matter. We have arrived at 148 units on a 14-acre site. How did we, did we arrive at that number of units correctly? Did we use the... Did we use the correct calculation to come up with that number? There has been a position taken by a public comment, someone has been submitting comments to this board that says that we are required under the R3 zone to deduct gross wetland area from our, the side, the square footage of our site. And then from there undertake a calculation that will yield what our FAR is, that will govern our development. I can tell you, it, it's our position that is an incorrect analysis of your code. And here are my reasons why. Number one, when I went to you earlier, when I pointed out that your overlay zone explicitly reached back and pulled in under the R3, the recreational requirement, in this instance, for the FAR, the code states that the Planning Board may be guided by the area and bulk requirements of the R3 multifamily zone and may apply variations to those requirements within the limitations set for here, herein. It also says in the next sentence, the FAR shall be allowed up to, but may not exceed 0.55. Now, when you look at your bulk table, okay, your bulk, your, the resident bulk table, that's an appendix to your code, it states explicitly, multifamily, in multifamily districts, including the R3, R2A, RSP1, RSP2, and R3A, to calculate the FAR, you shall deduct the gross area wetlands. Here, in, we are not a multifamily, we're the overlay, where a multifamily is a principal permitted use. In this part of the statute, in our overlay zone, this board is explicitly told that you are guided, you are guided by the R3 and you may apply your variations. This is not, we are not required, there is no code requirement for this development to deduct gross wetland area from our square footage. And we did not do that. What we did was is we used the 0.55 FAR as the controlling number. We then took it to the site and then did the calculations. We calculated our roads, we calculated the open space, we calculated the recreational requirement, our setbacks, our building distances between each other. And we arrived at the site plan that we arrived at with, by the way, a .48 FAR. We're underneath what's allowed. So the comment that we had, we are incorrect, we're presenting you with incorrect calculations because we failed to deduct the wetlands is misplaced. That is not a requirement here. How we got to our units, our unit count is exactly what is, is being guided by the overlay zone, not a strict adherence to the R3 zone.
And you say guided by, is there any reason why we can't do that deduction?
Well, yes, I mean, the deduction, what would be the basis of the deduction when some-
That's a different question. Can we even raise the issue in this situation?
No, because I don't think you have any-
You don't think we can, you don't think it's, guided by doesn't mean maybe use some of the standards of the R3?
Well, use some of the standards of the R3, I think, is a, is, is one description. But to have an explicit requirement to deduct, to deduct a-
I agree, there's no explicit requirement to do so, but does the possibility of our doing so exist? Is that something we can consider?
I don't believe so. In, in other zones that are not multifamily, other residential zones, commercial zones, other things of that nature, when you're looking at the totality of a site, you don't deduct for, for gross. So I believe, I don't, I don't believe you would deduct, that you would have a basis to deduct. That's, that's an enormous imposition on it.
Having a basis, again, is a different question than having the ability to think about it and possibly do it. If we find there's no basis, that's a different thing. Can we say maybe there might be a basis for it and then use it as a, under the guidelines of R3?
Look, I, I don't, I do not think in the spirit of this law and the way, when you have statutory interpretation, when you're looking at things that are explicitly called out, and this, the, the deduction of the wetland from usable space, that would greatly reduce the F, the, the space that we could use to calculate FAR because of the spirit and the intent of this overlay law, when you go back to what kind of project it's trying to yield, right? With the multifamily, with the pedestrian friendly, all the, all the aspects of this that we're bringing forward. And also, the other aspect of this that I think goes against this possibility of reducing the ability to yield the most out of a site is that your, your overlay, the enabling legislation has certain development incentives. And in this code, it says, in the event the applicant agrees to make infrastructure improvements that benefit the town to an extent greater than what is required, right? By our, by the, by our adverse conditions, then we would have certain development incentives that we could apply for, that we could ask this board for. And for example, perhaps a, a higher FAR or a higher yield of units or maybe reduce parking, any, any, there are a million examples that you could use for a development incentive. We are actually triggering this subsection with the infrastructure, the intersection improvements we're proposing, but we're not looking for this development incentive. So I think that to take away from a site under the auspices of the purpose of this overlay, I think goes against, goes against, goes against the spirit and the purpose and the legislative intent of the overlay.
We have a range of things that we can consider under the overlay law, isn't that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And so any project that fits within that range is, is a possibility here, right?
Generally speaking, of course.
And where does this project fit in on the density side of the range? You know, the number of units that you've got here?
Well, that's the second part of our, of our, um, no, no, I mean, that kind of ties in and maybe it's a nice segue. We, first of all, we are underneath, I'm sorry, we are below, right? We are below, we are below the, the FAR, we are below the FAR. And if you look, now we can turn to the map that I had handed out earlier. It's actually a perfect segue. If you look at the map that we handed out earlier, this is the map that we've relied on in the past. We've made one slight improvement to it, one slight clarification to the coloring of it. To the right is the, is the Rochambeau Residential Development, in the bottom right-hand corner, right? That's across Underhill. There we are in the green, the light green. I'll come back to us in a second. There's Beaver Ridge in the light blue and across 118, that's a commercial development. We are, in terms of our acreage yield, the, the unit count per acre, you see the Beaver Ridge, they're at 18. I'm sorry, 19.8. Guys are really getting bad. We're at a 10.7 and then across Rochambeau, that's an 8.7. So, and if you look, I want to return to the green shaded area there for a minute. When you look at the dark green shaded area, that's the rectangle then goes around the, the, the Underhill House, that's where our highest, sorry, that's where our highest concentration is of the density. That's where the condominium units are. Everything else is more, has a more lower dense residential feel, those feel to it. Those are the townhomes that are up against Glen Rock. So our density, when you're asking about where, where does this project fit within density of the overlay zone and density of the surrounding neighborhood, we are literally in the middle of existing conditions. We're, we're higher than our neighbor to the right, but we're lower than our neighbor to the left. And we're not as high as the commercial project across the street.
And these are all calculated on the same basis. In other words, it's, it's raw square footage or acreage without any deductions on any of these projects, right?
Units per acre.
Pardon?
Units per acre.
Per acre, with no offsets for wetlands or anything, right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And, and that's what the density-
So it's the same comparison across the-
Correct.
All the colors.
And if you, so there's two, two parts to this. There's the density and then there's the FAR.
Okay.
So that, that deduction for the wetland and the buffer, that relates to FAR.
Not density.
Not density. Density is a per unit, if you, if you want to look at the R3 guidance from the R3, it's, it, it allows you nine to 12 units per acre.
R3, okay.
In R3. So that's density. What, what, what you're, the, what's trying to be drawn out here is, is a deduction for wetland and buffer. But that only deals with FAR. We could have, still have the same number of units, but maybe they'll be smaller. Instead of being 900 square feet each, they'll be 800 square feet each. But it'll be the same number of units.
And I, I just want to point out that the R3 has that deduction and then you calculate your FAR from what's left over. But then your, your units count is related to the FAR in that the more units you have, there's a, a range from nine to 12 units per acre. If you have the 12 units per acre, if that's what you elect, you get less FAR on that same. So, so it is related to the density. But it's, it's a yield calculation and it was written at a time that the, the town was growing out at a, for single-family suburbia. We were just getting into environmental considerations and protections. And so it subtracted that out and really restricted the unit count to, to be comporting with a typical and not overwhelmed suburban growth. But the times are now different and the overlay district is responding to much different parameters that we have in place today and a much different set of responses that exist in the comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2011, which has placed some density, if you want to call it that, in and around the Hamlet areas. Limited to that so that even if it does have higher density than you would expect, it's in an area that is already built up and you, and makes a good transition. So I think, I think there's no really short way to look at this. All of these answers in this regard is really a long answer. And you, and you, you really have to understand what the thread of some of the history was, what the R3 was attempting to do at the time, what the overlay district is attempting to do. And then in terms of being guided, when you look at what the, what they're yielding here, number of units across the amount of land that they have, it is in keeping with what you would get in the R3. And I want to point out that there are R3 developments in this town that were developed on properties without wetlands. And they could take full advantage of that. So those comparisons get to be very muddy. But I think that what's demonstrated here is that the yield, I mean, that the density of the units over the amount of land that they have is comparable to what's neighboring them, actually much lower than Beaver Ridge. But also it is right in the area of what the R3 is limiting you to, right in the middle at 10, 10 or so units per acre, where that range is nine to 12. You'd have much smaller apartments. So FAR in a, in a certain way doesn't necessarily translate to the number of apartments you get. You can have very big apartments, let's say, if you have, you know, so. It's all very relative, but when you get down to it and compare how many apartments per the, across the land that you own, I think it's very comparable to its neighbors, comparable to any R3 that we have in terms of what those numbers are.
So in your opinion, this is accurate?
Yes.
Sorry, Tom.
Just one more update. We did receive a letter from the DOT who wants to get the process moving. They are requesting an agreement with the town. So we, we're talking to the Town Board about that now.
Thank you for letting us know.
Okay. And now we'll show you the architecture. You know, we'll, we'll be quick. You want it here, where do you, where do you want us to?
I've got it up on the screen.
Oh, you got it on the screen, okay.
It's on the screen. Much better.
All right, so that's the view, the southern view, okay? And I don't know if we could blow it up at all, Joe, so we can see some of the architecture. Yeah. So, and Terrence, can you just pick up? It, it's basically all the buildings on the side are going to be white. We're going to have different foundations, condos, apartments, and the townhouses will all have a different foundation. They're all going to be stone, okay? We're going to use the hardy plank white, the fiber trim boards, and then a architectural shingle that'll be like a, I don't know what that is. It looks like a weathered wood. So, is that what it is?
Dark gray.
Oh, dark gray, okay. But it will probably move, you know, the shingles will change that, okay, too. But I think that, that'll be the theme throughout. We're not going to change colors because, you know, we, we have the main house, it's white. You know, we don't, we don't want to start changing things, so. The next one, well, let's do the other side. Let's do the 118 side so they could see what that looks like. Okay. So that's the 118, that's, this is the reduced version. The other side, yeah.
No, this is with the, there you go.
Okay. So that's from 118, we, where we shrunk it 30 feet, okay? So it was, was longer before. But that's what it looks like. Without any trees or landscaping or anything else, that's what it will look like from 118.
But the parking is in front of that though, right?
Yes, parking in front of it and then you could see the garage where you would enter, okay? Now, these are the townhomes. With the townhomes, we have uphill, which are the ones on top, and downhill. Okay, the uphill is because we're going into a bank, so the, the garages are down below. And the uphill, the garages are on the first floor, okay? And in most cases, there's a walkout basement.
Except for the uphill.
Yes. And then the, the next one is the condo building, I think the last one. Yes, the back.
There's the grading on.
The one on the top is the back of the uphill. And the downhill is on the, the lower.
So this, this side here would be facing Beaver Ridge and the condos.
No, but that's not the condo building.
No, I know, but this is, this side would be facing that.
Yeah.
Do I have the condo?
Yeah. And that's, that's the condo building, okay? Which, you know, a lot of glass, a lot of light.
Kind of windows using that.
Excuse me?
What kind of windows?
They're all Marvin.
Nice looking window.
Are those, those mullions and so forth black or that's just for the purposes of?
Yeah, we think we're going to do black.
Okay.
And then, yeah, everything else will be white.
You going to go to Abaca with all this?
Yeah, well, we've been going back and forth, so we have all their comments. We're going to go out of another round. Our architect is from Virginia, so he doesn't, you know, when he comes up, we try to get him in to see Abaca. So I think we're going in in a week or two.
These are all pitch roof, there's no mechanicals on any of the roofs?
Uh, yes, on the, the apartment building there is. And that's it.
Can, can you go back to the 118?
Yes.
Elevation?
Sure.
That's Underhill, right?
This is 118.
So my suggestion would be to, as you have in the Underhill elevation, add in the elevation of the mansion. So you get the, you, you get the comparison of those two. Because I think that you made some revisions to the windows here, which I think are much more complimentary to the architecture of the mansion, which I think is much better. But it would be good to have that as part of the elevation to understand the whole built facade.
Pretty nice.
I've got a question. On, on the gable ends, you have detail on what I'd call a soffit area. Is that to, to kind of echo what's on the main building?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And even like, like the eyebrow, there's a few of those on the main building.
You just need a tower now?
But that, that's all we have this evening unless you have anything else. We did, we did have one other thing just to talk about, which Mark will tell.
Sure, so just to wrap up, as we're scheduling, we're, we're, we have, you have a June 12 regularly scheduled meeting. We were hoping to get on, for June 7th and/or June 8th, scheduling your public hearing on the matter so that we would, we would adjourn. We're anticipating, that, that's not a regular, that's either a Wednesday or a Thursday. I think it was the board's desire to have us come in as a standalone item on a special B- item on a special beating, we're expecting many comments. And then if we had a June 7th or June 8th public hearing, um, we could, we, if necessary to adjourn that evening, we could reopen it on the 12th, which was your, your next regularly scheduled meeting. So, that's what we would, we'd ask for, that the, uh, the board be able to, to schedule that meeting, that, I'm sorry, public hearing, the public hearing.
We'll, we'll listen to your consider, we'll take your consideration, or your question into consideration, we have to check all our schedules. I agree, I think to have you guys with others on a agenda would be here late into the night.
You could always put us first.
But let us work with Rob, and then we'll get back to you.
And what about Monday night? Is there anything else that you want to discuss at this time? Is there anything else you want to discuss? What, what should we bring on Monday night? Do you want us to come Monday night?
Well, I think the, the, the big topics that we were looking at from the beginning was traffic, the historic end of it, uh, the density, and the environmental. I think we've heard on those four major topics, I think we're going to need time to absorb that.
I think we hear it a lot.
We have.
From everybody else but ourselves.
Right.
And I think it's now incumbent upon us to step back and kind of get a, our read and review of what's going on, possibly go right through the EIF points. Make sure we've got the information we need, the issues are covered, and what's, what our positions are on those things. And I would prefer we did that before.
Meeting in.
We had a public hearing scheduled, so that we know what we're going out to the public hearing with, and what our concerns are. Because my feeling is, once you go out on a public hearing, you're saying to the public, "This is how we want to proceed, tell us your responses." So, you're basically endorsing a particular concept as we go forward. If we're ready to do that, fine, but I think we need, as a board, for the six of us to have that discussion at some point beforehand.
Well, I just want to remind everyone that, um, the EAF has to be referred to all involved and interested agencies for their comment. So, it, it's, we, it's only been drafted, and you know it's been a moving target, and been, being developed as you've gone through. Which is exa, appropriate to do, uh, but at some point, when you have gotten all the information that you feel that needs to be in there, which I think is, should be soon, as you just said, that we need to refer that out, and I think we need to give ample time, so I think that should probably give that people 30 days to comment on it. So, I think you'd have to take into account, when you have the public hearing, you'll probably have at least a 10-day written period, possibly another meeting, and then if, but we should calculate in that 30 days and not wait too long on, on the referral at the very least.
And, and what is the impact of holding, and closing a public hearing, what does that trigger in terms of our next steps?
Typically, you're closing them and leaving written comment for 10 days.
And then what?
And then the next step is getting to, getting to a decision, there is a 62-day clause, clock, but those can be modified by agreement with the applicant.
One other suggestion I'd like to make is when the board meets to discuss among itself how it feels about the project, if it has enough information, if it needs more, I would ask that the town's consultants, the traffic, the historical, and, uh, B&amp;L be invited to participate with the board interactively at that meeting.
So, maybe we show a separate meeting internally with our consultants at that point?
What do you think?
Yeah, absolutely, I think, you know, some of the information just got delivered today, and so they need a chance to analyze it, absorb it, and reflect and comment on it. So, I think each one of the consultants should have an opportunity to speak. I don't know if that's Monday night, but, uh.
I think that should be separate.
Assuming we have other stuff.
This is two and a half hours now.
Other items on the agenda coming up.
What, we do? What does Monday look like? Is it crazy?
What do we have Monday? It's not crazy.
Light, light?
So, you can keep it light?
What does that mean, only four hours?
It's only four hours. Don't worry about it.
Two extensions, a renewal.
Well, I mean, you can start it and take as much time as you feel is appropriate, you don't have to go all night.
Can we?
You want to start it on Monday? And get talking on it?
We invite one of the consultants Monday? And I, I don't think Johanna's going to have enough time between now and Monday to absorb all that, but.
Only light reading, Johanna.
Bring in some pizza.
Couple of pages of light reading. That's, that's a good idea.
I could.
Can we do that? Can we start early?
You can always start early.
No, we have to be public.
You have to be public, but.
Public would have input, would be a work session.
Well, we have to be in public.
So, maybe we start it, you want us? Start it an hour early?
Can you guys make it at 6?
Yeah, it's 6 o'clock, right? Monday?
PM, right? All right, so why don't we see who, you know, maybe the first two consultants?
For Mon, for Monday?
We start our regular business at, get our business at, between 6 and 7, and we can spend the rest of the evening on this.
I will invite two consultants on Monday, be in a work session. We'll get started at 6. Change the meeting time to 6. Work through the regular meeting, and then move into.
Yeah, probably in an hour, you know, by 7, we might be done with the regular stuff.
And then start with the, we're going to give Johanna and Eric group time to, to look at the reports.
Do you want from our side? Do you want the, our traffic consultant too, because you're going to have your traffic, or what, what do you, or do you just, what do you want?
I think it might not be a bad idea to have the, the traffic.
But I, I just want to, at this point, we are going to start checking off what we're, you know, but we need to do that.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, you're.
As opposed to hearing more stuff.
And, uh, if they can get the historical person, your historical person. And then the environmental's going to take a minute.
How long?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't know, that's a, that's a stack to look through.
How, how are you on lead time for what you need to do?
I mean, I, I guess it depends, I don't know if I've just, I guess it depends if you would want to see, like, a formal document from me, or if we're just going to have kind of an open discussion.
I, I think at this point, not to cut you off, I think we need a formal document.
Okay.
So that we can then regroup with their professional, and kind of hash it out.
Um, I mean, I'm used to being told, I guess, what, what day I have to hit, but.
Friday.
Friday and two days Friday, or next Friday? I mean, certainly, um, you know, at some point next week, you know, would be reasonable.
We also want, obviously, time for our planners to take a look at it and.
Yes, I think there's more information coming Friday.
Well, I think that's the question now, let's see, is what do we, we are about wrapped up with the draft EAF. We're about ready to submit that based on a few things we've heard tonight, and, and the last-minute changes to the plan we've made. We could be submitting that within 48 hours, optimistically, early next week, not as optimistically, but, uh, I think it's important to know what it is you want at this time.
My, my suggestion is that it gets submitted.
Yes.
And, and that, because you've brought, you've int, intake in a lot of information and a lot of data, and so any, any modifications that you may have or questions, what I, I would feel would probably be more of a minor revision if there are any, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate the board for all the work you're putting in, thank you.
Robin, are we, we're okay to start at 6 on Monday, or do you have to notice for that or anything?
You got to notice the public?
We're gonna.
Yeah, you don't have to remind me of that. Yeah, I mean, we work.
We're going to move into, uh, exact session?
No, I understand, you know, I fully appreciate, you know, on the shortcut, you know, my review.
Is there a second? All in favor? Motion carried. And we're not coming back.